Yes, that was aggressive.
We'll order our special city council workshop meeting by July 7th.
Look like I know what I'm doing.
This is a public hearing meeting. We're going to be, just to let you know, we're going to be recessing some of these meetings and then reconvening them because the public hearing actually goes on to 7 o'clock. So there's going to be some of that happening on a couple of these different meetings. But let me, item number, so we are in a public hearing. Item number three is discussion and possible action to approve resolution number 2020-7 to authorize submission of 2020 land and water conservation grant application for phase, funding of Phase 1 of Owens Field Combined Softball and Baseball Complex. Leroy, you taking the lead on this?
I can't figure out which ones to turn off.
You started with take 3, but you read 2, so.
Yeah.
As the mayor indicated, I'm going to go ahead and do my presentation address the city council's comments. And then we will recess this meeting until 7:00 and then reconvene at 7:00 to have the public hearing portion of this meeting. Because miscommunication, we posted the public hearing at 7:00 instead of 6:00. So we're going to do some fancy dancing tonight, as the mayor indicated. Back in 2017. Was Task Force appointed. It's an ad hoc committee by the city council to look at the sports complex. Over on the right gives the current membership as of July 7th. Back in the city council retreat in August of last year, there was priorities set by the city council. And in those priorities that were divided into four categories, infrastructure, economic development, planning, quality of life. Under the quality of life one, the city council wanted to look at enhancing the existing soccer, baseball, and softball facilities in our community. And they asked the ad hoc sports complex task force to develop a moderate cost action plan to enhance these sports facilities, either through enhancements to existing facilities or construction of new facilities in a multi-step plan. That came about because the first glance at doing the sports facility on the 80 acre site that we're now using to develop a shovel-ready industrial park to do the full plan was 14 million. And to do just Phase 1, the softball complex was around 6 million. And so wanted, the council wanted to look at something more economical in scope. One of the things to remind you, as we look at that, we're not leaving soccer out. We're talking about baseball and softball tonight. But we decided early on, the soccer complex that's at Academy Road and College Avenue, we're going to try to improve it in place. In 2018, we installed an irrigation system. City bought the materials. We installed it ourselves with some technical assistance from the school district and participation from some of the members of the soccer league. Next step, we'll look at there, we own this entire area. And we will look at clearing some of these trees and adding additional parking in the future. Now on to softball. We own all this property that we'll be talking about in two phases. One would be Phase 1, taking the existing softball complex and all fields. There's these three fields and two small fields here. We will put part in here and three new fields. And that would be. The softball complex. It takes up 27 acres of this 47 acre site. Phase 2 would be relocating the Little League complex out of Cottonwood Flats to this side of our property. And if you don't remember, Mercy Hospital is here. Here, this is Academy Road, this is the time where we're at. And I did attach the full drawing in there for you. So if you look at Phase 1, which is the softball complex, it would be refurbishing the three existing fields. I've listed in the prior point what that would include. Construct three new fields, a new concession stand restroom building, parking lots with asphalt curb and gutter, North Lot 191 spaces, South Lot 58. And then the entry road to 33 would be asphalt curb and gutter. Cost estimate for that project is 5.7 million. Because of the topography and the timber on these sites, our excavation and embankment dirt work is going to be a million dollars of that 5.7. But if we were to go buy a shovel-ready site, we would be right back there. Again, this is a more detailed cost estimate. And we, Monday, we sent out a packet that had that in larger scale if you needed to see it better. Potential funding for this project, Land and Water Conservation Grant. Grant applications normally due in July. That's why we're having the public hearing tonight because we knew that we would either have to adopt a resolution, approve the grant application tonight or our next meeting on July 21st. But just recently, they extended the deadline for this year to August 31st. We were not aware of that when we set this schedule up. Potential grant, 500,000 to a million dollars. I talked to the administrator of this program at the Oklahoma Tourism and Recreation Department. She indicated that asking for a million dollar grant out of this fund was not an unreasonable request and had likelihood of potential funding. And the Land and Water Conservation Grant is a reimbursable 50-50 matching grant. Reimbursal means you spend the money first, then you turn it in and you get your grant money back. And if you do a $2 million project, you would get a million dollar grant. The city would have to match that with a million dollars. Phase 2, the Little League relocating it from Cottonwood Flats, be construction of six new fields. Each field, it tells what's going to consist of. Won't go through all those details. Two of each type of field, Little League, 10 and under, and T-ball. New concession. And parking lots, again, 128 spaces with asphalt curb and gutter. And again, the entry road off of 33 would be asphalt curb and gutter. Cost estimate for this project, 4,748,000. The excavation and embankment on this, it would be 490,000. And I believe city engineer can correct me, but I believe the reason this is a lower number is a lot of this work will already be done moving dirt around to do Phase 1, the softball. Again, 4.7 million. One potential grant opportunity for this, from the flooding in 2019, Department of Commerce received $36 million grant from HUD for several counties to address damage that occurred during the flooding in 2019. I'll get into that more later. We've got some updates on program guidelines that will play a factor, but I've got it on a slide a little later.
Leroy, you mentioned the asphalt access from 33 on both of those. On both of those, is that included in the first cost, Phase 1, or?
Each one's a separate phase, that's a separate road.
It's a separate road?
Yes. See that road?
The 33?
Right here is one access for the softball off 33. And here's another access road for the baseball.
Okay, so there'll be two access.
Correct.
Right now, there's just one.
Correct. Well, the problem is, we don't own that right of way, where that road is. So we're basically crossing other people's property. Okay, so Owens Field Combined Softball and Baseball, Phase 1, 5.7. Relocate the Little League complex out of Cottonwood Flats, 4.7. The two combined would be 10.4 million. Back in April of last year, we had a workshop when we were looking at the 80 acre site at Midwest and East College. And again, that was going to cost over 14 million dollars. And then if we broke out Phase 1, just the softball complex, it was going to be 6.6. We talked about the 3/4 cent capital improvement sales tax. But given the commitment to fund other priority projects, it was determined that there was inadequate funding in the 3/4 cent CIP tax to fund the proposed sports complex 100%. Then we talked about either a special city sales tax or permanent increase to motel tax to help fund that Phase 1. And at that time, city council didn't have an appetite to pursue a public vote of either one of those tax increases, so those were rejected. Given the cost of these projects that were proposed at Owens Field, we have now taken those and looked at a scaled down version. And I'll go through those in a minute. But Phase 1, if we scale it down, Phase 1A, we scaled it down to a $2 million project. And then Phase 2, the Little League complex, we've scaled it down to a potential $3 million project, and I'll go through those. Phase 1A, the softball complex, is this area here. There would be no improvements to the existing field, but the site improvements in Phase 1A would be construction of the three new softball fields, installation of lighting system on one new field, not all three of them, 1,300 square foot concession restroom building, not a fully irrigated system, but quick connects for irrigation at each field, parking lots, rock with curb and gutter. Same number of spaces, but they would be unmarked. And the entry road would be rock with curb and gutter. And then, of course, the water and sanitary. So that is the Phase 1A scaled down project for $2 million. Then we would have to come back over time and make improvements to these fields. And then we could upgrade paving and those kind of things, but this gets us started. Again, potential funding would be the Land and Water Conservation Grant. And this is a detailed cost estimate. And again, we provided it in a full page in your packet. Phase 2A of the softball complex, it really, if you look at the drawings, they look very similar. But there, we would construct six new ball fields, install lighting system on two of the fields, again, a small concession restroom, quick connects for irrigation. The entry road would be asphalt with curb and gutter. And the parking lots would be asphalt. And then we would have a pedestrian footbridge and water and sewer. And again, that is just the detail on that. Recently found out, a couple of days ago, more details on the disaster recovery grant that the Department of Commerce got. We knew there was a priority to three counties. But that 36 million, they're particularly looking in an area of housing recovery, focused on low and moderate income beneficiaries. So if their priority is housing, a ball field project may not rank very high. And also, of the 36 million, 29 million or 80% is targeted to three counties, Muskogee, Tulsa, and Sequoia. That leaves 7 million of the 36 for 17 counties to fight over, roughly about 500,000 per county. So the, once the final, right now, they're taking public comments. And through August 24th, they haven't even come out with the plan yet. It's going to be available on July 20th. We will comment on that, but we won't know the likelihood of using that grant source for a ball field for quite some time yet. Land and Water Conservation Fund, again, we talked about it's a reimbursable 50-50 match. Deadline is August 31st. I don't want to give you an opportunity to use that excuse to delay taking action tonight, but that does give us some additional time. If you're not ready to adopt a resolution tonight, we could either do it the second meeting in July or the first meeting in August and still get the application in. The Land and Water Conservation Funds distributed to Oklahoma over the years, I've given those amounts. The grant that we will be applying for, they're anticipating $6 million for this grant year. So more funds than they've gotten in the past. And again, I visited with the administrator of the program, and she indicated that a million dollar application would be a reasonable grant application asked for. $2 million with million match, billion grant. Again, what that would do is Phase 1, that I talked about earlier. At our Guthrie Sports Task Force meeting on June 30th, recommendations that come out of that meeting is, one, pursue funding for Phase 1, the scaled down Owens Field softball. Submit a reimbursable 50-50 matching 2020 Land and Water Conservation Grant application in the sum of just over $2 million. Appropriate to sum of a million dollars from the city's capital improvement fund to provide the required 50% match for the Land and Water Conservation Grant. We visited with Kim, and she indicates we do have, we can find the million dollars to do that. And if the 2020 Land and Water Conservation Grant is not funded, the recommendation of Task Force is to take the million dollars that was committed as match and use that to at least start the improvements in Owens Field so that we at least get something started. I think we've been talking in our community for 30 years about improving sports facilities. And we'd like to at least get something started. And then the third recommendation, we know the timing's not right at the current time, but in 2021, the Task Force recommends revisiting the ideal of an election to increase the Guthrie Hotel Tax with the increased earmark for sports facilities maintenance and improvements. We could even set some money aside each year out of that revenue stream as matching money for future grants. This is based on the revenue stream from 2018. I didn't try to update it to the current time because of the impact of COVID. But before COVID, if we increased it 1% from 4 to 5, that would generate over 50,000. If you increased it 6%, 112 and so forth, and you went up to 80%, it would generate $224,000 annually as money earmarked towards sports complex. With that, we have the affidavit for the public hearing. Again, inadvertently miscommunication, we published it for 7 o'clock, and that's why we'll recess after we have our discussion and conduct that hearing at 7:00, reconvene for that. The resolution that was in your packet does the things that was recommended by the Sports Complex Task Force, authorizing us to apply for the grant, committing the match funds from our CIP fund, which is a 3/4% sales tax. And then further, the mayor and the city managers authorized to sign all the supplemental grant applications that complete the grant application process. Anytime you apply for a grant, there's 25 forms you have to sign to go along with the application process. And we'd rather not bring all 25 of those forms to approve them. They will be things that will just be completing the grant application process. With that, I'd be glad to entertain questions. I will entertain them. Chris is the chairman of the Sports Task Force, if you have questions for him. And city engineer is here as well, if you have questions to direct to him.
Thank you, Leroy. Questions from council?
So originally, we were thinking that we would be a tournament destination when we were talking about this, and the way it's scaling down, none of that happens, right?
Want to answer that, Chris?
With the, with Phase 1 scaled down, you would have three new fields, and then you would have the three other fields. Hopefully, you can remodel those as you're constructing as well. But that would give us six fields. I was in Perry two weeks ago, I'll be in Perry again this weekend. And they have four fields, and they have an age bracket on each field. And so they're able to have an 8 and under, 10 and under, 12 and under, 14 and under tournament at the same time, just on four fields. And when we, Leroy showed those softball fields, those six fields, the three new ones, and hopefully in the future, the three remodeled fields, those softball fields can also be used as baseball fields. You just bring in portable mounds, you play baseball on a full dirt, and then you can put the bases at the increments that they're needed. So you can still play baseball on softball somewhat. People watching understand as well that it's not just softball, it can be baseball and softball on those dirt fields. And even, even the kids in Edmund play baseball on a dirt, on all dirt fields. So it does happen.
So the dirt work and the leveling and clearing and all that is going to be the same on the scaled down project as it is going to be on the full-blown project? Because you have to do the grading and land.
Correct. Because most of the excavation and embankment and dirt work is where the parking lot and the three new fields are.
So we're looking at a couple million bucks on that, right? Isn't that right? When it shakes out?
I thought it was a million.
Was it a million? 1.1 was the total dirt and land work?
For Phase 1.
For Phase 1?
The softball fields. And then I think it was a little over 400,000 for Phase 2.
So about a million six for both of them.
Correct.
So can't we find a piece of land for that that's more suitable? Is the question, and that's where I was going with that. That seems like a significant amount of money. I mean, we're looking at 47 acre, 41 acres. I would think that we'd be able to find a more suitable, closer to the highway type piece of land, I would think.
Of course, we looked at the 80 acres, and we got evicted from it because we're going to use it for an industrial park. We, we looked at.
You what?
The 80 acre site, we looked at.
We had other alternative.
We, we decided to use it for an industrial park and we love softball. And I'm not disagreeing with that, I'm just saying, we looked at purchasing land by Walmart from the school land commission, and it was going to be in excess of $2 million. And they were very difficult, to say the least, in working with them to try to acquire that property. Each step of the way, they, they seemed to add a step or change the particulars of the deal. I don't know if there's another 50 acres out there that we can buy for, you know, you'd have to buy it for less than 1.4 in order to make a difference.
Still have excavating going on after that.
Correct.
But it's a multifaceted difference. If you can get it closer to the highway and you're looking for tournament access and stuff, it might make it more sensible, is all I was thinking.
I think the Sports Task Force was comfortable with this location with its access off of Noble or Highway 33 for people to get there. There may be some more strategic locations that require people to go through town to get there instead of coming from the west. But as far as having tournaments there, and there are several people on our task force that participate in sports events all over, and, and they indicate that there, many times, sports facilities are remotely located, but they always find their way to Walmart in town to spend money in between games.
Chris, you want to make a comment?
Ideally, off the highway would be the ideal place. Off the division would be the ideal place. But I spoke with councilman Channel several months ago. We need to be realistic. We've been waiting on baseball and softball fields for 40, 50 years here. And this is the most realistic thing that we can have, happen. And not only for tournaments, which is the ultimate goal, but also a place for our local kids can have a place to enjoy instead of down the flats. And so the, it's possible, like, again, I keep referring back to Perry because they're smaller than Guthrie. I don't, I'm not comparing this to Broken Arrow, Edmund Mustang, who have great facilities. There's a lot of small towns, Alva, Perry, that have great facilities as well. Perry's baseball fields are behind the John Van's dealership off the highway. And there's no restaurants or anything on that side. They have to go across the highway into Perry and get to those. So, which is what I did last week. Correct. There's not even a Walmart there. So I just want to add to that as well. We'd love to be off the highway, but we're looking at $2 million right now, and.
And you're happy to get in.
We haven't bought land. I mean, if we don't, if the city doesn't own the land, then there's a whole lot more money there. Hopefully, they have utilities, because if they don't, that's even more money.
Well, we're actually looking at 4 million, right? I don't think we're looking at 2 million.
We're at 2 billion up front for 1A, right?
Correct.
A million and four from us and a million and four from them.
But there's 2A as well. It's not just the, it's not just the, what, when is the phased, let's talk about that. So on the 1A, on the late, on the softball phased down part of it, or whether it's phased down or not, when does 2A come in, or 2 or 2A come in?
In the future. I mean, one, you have to look if there's grant funding possibilities in the future. If the city takes a million of the CIP to match the $2 million grant for Phase 1A, are we immediately going to have another million dollars to turn around as matching money? are we immediately going to have another $1 million to turn around as matching money for a grant next year for Phase 2A? We don't know. That, that's in the future. What we're trying to do is come up with a concept that gets us started so that we can quit talking about it and actually see some action that is a logical step forward that we can build on over time.
Yeah, I, I think the task force, there are certain members of the task force that obviously still had a desire for a grander scale and a, and a grander location. I think the, the thing that was, the overriding factor was that the city has been dealing with the same issue for so long and, and hearing about how we are going to provide a significant sports complex for our youth. And year after year, it goes by and nothing happens. And the, the driving factor here was, let's make something happen with a plan that identifies, maybe even has to be, if it has to be phasing, it has to be phasing, but a plan that, that identifies, here's where we're going, here's how, here's how we can get there in a reasonable amount of money, you know, millions of dollars, but still reasonable compared to 15 million, and, and that the city can see that and, and have some, some faith that we are, we, the city, is doing something to improve the youth, youth facilities for, or the, the sports facilities for our youth.
And I might remind everybody, if you go back into late 2016, in early 17, when the 3/4% sales tax was passed, people think that a sports complex was included in that roughly 15, 16 million dollar issue. But if you go back and look at the details, the amount of money that was budgeted out of that 15 or 16 million was 1.6 million. And that wasn't just for the sports complex. It had about five sports or park-related projects in it. Well, that, that's not enough money to build a sports complex. We can see just the softball parts, 5 million. If you scale it down, it's a $2 million project. So it was a little misleading to say that a sports complex was going to be funded out of the CIP when, when the money, the 15, 16 million dollars was divided up, there was only 1.5 million divided out for sports complex, plus other projects were going to come out of that same 1.5 million. So there's a lot of people that still think that they were told at, at the tax election and the, the promotion of it, the sports complex was going to come out of the CIP tax, but there just wasn't enough carved out of it to fund the project.
So if we don't get the grant, looking at a worst case, and the $1 million that Kim is going to find laying out there, that's going to be spent on groundwork?
We would revisit it. If we don't get the grant, we may reverse it and use it to enhance the existing fields first.
That's what I was going to suggest.
The reason we did not apply for the grant on the existing fields is we felt that the grant would be more competitive installing new fields rather than maintenance of existing fields because OTRD may perceive that maintenance should have been a responsibility the city took care of and not something for grant funding. So we thought the Phase 1A we proposed would be more competitive grant-wise, but if we don't get it, we may look at reshuffling and use that $1 million to upgrade the existing fields first and then look at another opportunity to fund the three new fields.
Yeah, and I get it, Chris. When I, my daughter, oldest daughter was a tween. I got cast into coaching their softball team, and we were, I called it the Misfits because that's what it was. It seemed like that's what we got. And not that that was bad, but we didn't have the right uniforms and everything. Where I'm going with this is, we'd get cast into the last game in the dark, and, and the whole nine yards. So I get it out there. I mean, we've been going out there for 20 years. And it's the same, was the same thing. Those who were last kind of get jacked around on the, on the whole evening there, you know? So, anyway, that was the question. What do we do, the land work or improve the fields?
Okay. Any other questions of Leroy?
I would point out, of course, you know, I played Little League baseball a few years ago. And I can remember growing up in southern Indiana, and some games, away games, we played, there was still corn stubble in the field, in the outfield.
I can tell you got scuffed up knee.
Just a few years ago. Any other questions of Leroy? All right. I remind you, we are going to, we're going to recess this and then come back at 7 o'clock, reconvene at 7 o'clock because that's what the announcement was for the public hearing, and then, then go through the actual motion. But I, I will make a motion to recess and reconvene at 7 o'clock.
Second.
Now, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about that? Okay, we go through roll call vote.
Can you make a motion?
Sure.
Okay.
I'm one of you.
All right. I didn't know if you could or not. Honestly, I'm...
Well, if he doesn't, I'll make a motion. Does somebody want a second mind?
I can. Okay, roll call vote on the motion to recess and reconvene at 7:00. Vice Mayor Case.
Aye.
Councilman Long.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Bothroyd.
Aye.
Councilwoman Paget.
Aye.
Mayor Gentling, aye, unanimous to recess and reconvene at 7 o'clock before the City Council meets. And it will be, again, at that time, a public hearing. And now I'd like to reconvene our City Council workshop meeting that started at 6 o'clock this morning, or this afternoon. It seemed like this morning, but 6 o'clock this afternoon. And this is a public hearing. Leroy?
At 6 o'clock, we had a special City Council meeting. We went over a PowerPoint detailing our options for sports complex at Owens Field that would, the master plan eventually would be six softball fields, six baseball fields. We looked at a scaled-down version of the softball complex that we could scale down to a $2 million investment so that we could apply for a Land and Water Conservation Fund grant, $1 million of grant money, $1 million of match money out of the CIP fund. Inadvertently, when we published the public notice for the public hearing portion of that meeting, we put 7 o'clock and it said 6 o'clock. So we went through the PowerPoint. We have addressed questions of the City Council. And as Mayor indicated, now the public hearing portion is open for anybody that wants to address the application for a Land and Water Conservation Fund to fund Phase 1A of the softball complex at Owens Field. If you're here for items on the City Council agenda or have things under public comments, if you would just hold the seat, we'll be to that in just a minute. But if anybody wants to make any comments on the proposed sports complex project, now would be the time to do that.
Okay, this is, again, a public hearing. You heard the remarks by Leroy. So anybody in the room that wishes to make any comments concerning the, the youth sports complex, specifically the grant application for Phase 1A that was briefed before. Hearing none.
Then we would close the public hearing. There is an agenda item, adopting the resolution to authorize us to submit the application, commit our match money, and allow the mayor and the city manager to sign supporting documentations to complete the application. If you're all ready, you could make a motion to approve that resolution, or it's also on the agenda of the regular meeting if you want to wait till then. Or, of course, you could wait until the next meeting since the application's not due until August 31st now instead of July 31st.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 2020-7, authorizing the submission of a Land and Water Conservation Grant application for Phase 1A Owens Field Combined Softball and Baseball Complex.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Okay, we'll go through roll call vote. Councilman Taylor.
Yes.
Councilman Bothroyd.
Aye.
Councilman Channel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Paget.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Case.
Aye.
Councilman Long.
Aye.
Mayor Gentling, yes, unanimous approval. Then to move forward with Resolution Number 2020-07, authorizing grant application for Phase One of the Combined Softball and Baseball Complex. With that, our workshop meeting is adjourned.